Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 19th, 2014, and this is a Moscow City Council regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. And we will start off with Dan Carskellin leading us.
All right, if everybody's joined in for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to, well, Memorial Day proclamation that I will be reading for everyone. This is Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who died in our nation's service. And whereas Memorial Day was initially proclaimed on May 5th, 1868, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic, in his General Order Number 11. And whereas Memorial Day was first observed, May 30th, 1868, when flowers were placed on the graves of Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas our predecessors fought in wars so that future generations would have freedom. And whereas they helped shape the society that we know today, including our political, economic, military, and social systems, advancements in science and technologies, and cultural traditions that enrich our heritage. And whereas it is important on Memorial Day to reflect on whole life memories of military personnel who fought and died for our country, to preserve the rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution, and to keep our nation strong. And whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to renew our patriotism and to articulate our common desire to live in freedom and seek peace, so that our nation's veterans will not have died in vain. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Lambert, Mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby recognize May 26, 2014, as Memorial Day in the city, and I urge all citizens to honor those who have died in service to our country. Thank you. Now, I'll move on to the consent agenda.
If there's no questions by council members, I would move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Walter to approve the consent agenda, and second by John Weber. I will start with a roll call from Art.
Aye.
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 And they've all passed. Six to zero. The next thing on our agenda, folks, is a staff recognition report by Gary Redner.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have several recognitions tonight in our public safety areas. First, I'd like to announce that Anthony Dollinger, one of our police officers, has received his post-instructor certification as an emergency vehicle operator, operations instructor, excuse me. Officer Jason House, one of our officers, has awarded his post-basic certificate, meaning that he has passed his basic and is now a full-fledged officer. David Hathaway, Officer David Hathaway, has received his post-advanced certificate. So, those are nice feathers in their caps for those police officers. We also are recognizing tonight members of our fire department. Recently, on Saturday, May 3rd, the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association had their first conference ever in the city of Moscow. I know Mayor Lambert welcomed them to the city of Moscow. While they were here, we had two members of our fire department who were awarded recognition. The first was Fire Marshal Joe Williams, who is honored by the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association as Fire Prevention Officer, or, excuse me, State of Idaho's Fire Prevention Officer of the Year. So, they noted that Joe was noted for his dedication to fire prevention activities, involvement in efficient inspections, public education training, and community outreach preparedness programs. Fire Chief Ed Button was also honored by that same association. He was named a life member of the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association, was recognized as a retiring Idaho Fire Chiefs Association Board of Director member, and recognized as the host of the conferences. I noted it was the first conference held by that association in the city of Moscow. So, great work by everyone, and we appreciate the opportunity to showcase their accomplishments at the council meeting.
Gary, is any of those employees with us present tonight?
Doesn't look like it.
Wouldn't be recognized. That's too bad, because those are some pretty nice articulations of some of the fine folks that work for us here in the city.
Well, we gather these over a period of weeks, so we don't know if they're going to be on shift or off shift. I suppose we could have drug Ed away from his preparations for retirement to come in, but with that, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And we know we're very proud of our police department, as well as our firefighters in our community, as well as others that work in our city. Mayoral appointments, I have none at this time. They will be coming in the future. We do have, we'll move on to item number four, public comment, the mayor's response period. Now, this is for the members of the public to speak to the council regarding matters that is not on tonight's agenda, yet not currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Adjustments, and not subject to a pending enforcement action or relative to a city personnel matter. So, if anybody would like to speak before us, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Keisha Bailey, and my address is 602 East E Street here in Moscow. And I'm here to talk about a global issue for Moscow.
Ma'am, would you bring the microphone a little closer?
Is this better?
Yeah.
Yeah?
You have a soft voice, Keisha, so you need to speak up to someone.
I know, in restaurants, they hardly ever hear me order. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is the citywide issue of daycare planning and zoning ordinances. Something that's been quite a bit of a struggle for daycares in Moscow is finding a fit either in commercial space or in residential space in Moscow. There are several daycares that have looked into where they could be located within the city over the course of several years. And what it boils down to for daycares is, in commercial space, there tends not to be an outdoor play area, which is a requirement for daycare licensing in the city. And when it comes to residential location, there's an off-street parking requirement, which is very difficult to reach with the way that our residential areas are set up, and also with planning and zoning. So, I'm just asking for there to be a review on the off-street parking. With the outdoor play space in commercial areas of Moscow, there's really not a place to be able to put outdoor play areas. However, it is, the off-street parking is something that may be able to be looked at as a way to reduce barriers to entry for daycares into our local community. So, also, something that I want to bring to the city's attention is that many of the daycares in Moscow have to meet the licensing requirements of the city. They have to meet the planning and zoning ordinances of the city. And many of the daycares in Moscow are also affiliated with the state. So, there are three different levels of requirements that many daycares in Moscow have to achieve in order to be able to be located within the city limits. So, this is what I'm bringing to you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, and that will be something we'll discuss and for future review. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Others who would like to speak this evening? And what we'll do on that, Gary, that's something we'll bring back. Perhaps you can address, or have someone from staff address at our next meeting.
Certainly, we could talk about the genesis of our daycare regulations and the various changes that have been made over the years, and the reason for the parking requirements and that sort of thing. Certainly, we'd be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. When that's responded to, I guess I'd like to make sure I'm clearly educated on where the layers are between the state and the city ordinances, because I remember us spending some time trying to line those up, and I want to just hear how that's doing.
Yeah, I think our former city attorney, Randy Fife, had done an analysis of the differences between the two, so we can try and dig that up.
That'd be great, thanks.
And perhaps it would be good for each councillor to have a copy of that, Gary, so they can be reviewed on it for our next meeting, so we can see what we can find.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to number five. Chief David Duke is here to talk about KLEA administration. Dave, the podium is yours, sir.
Accreditation.
Accreditation, sorry.
Yeah. Excuse me if I mispronounce it tonight.
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to present this proposal. The Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agency, we call it KLEA, is an independent nonprofit corporation established back in 1979 to assess and accredit law enforcement agencies throughout the United States. Through their programs, a police agency establishes a uniform set of best practices that are consistent on an international scale, they are measurable, and they create accountability to the community, policymakers, and the line officers who are performing the day-to-day work. Within the law enforcement standards of these best practices are compliance requirements dealing with life, health, safety, and high liability exposures. I get a question many times of, why do we want to become a KLEA-accredited agency? And what are the benefits? So, instead of me sitting here talking to you, I would like to present a video that explains the benefits.
Why your agency and community will benefit from becoming a KLEA-accredited agency.
If you're the CEO of a public safety agency today, one of the most proactive steps you can take to demonstrate your agency is well-managed, well-trained, and well-prepared is to lead your organization through KLEA accreditation. The KLEA accreditation process is a management model. Once your agency has worked its way through all the applicable standards, and has created the policies and procedures, the written directives, it presents you, the CEO, on a continuing basis with a blueprint that promotes the efficient use of resources and improved service delivery.
The process of accreditation is not only important from a management perspective, but also from the perspective of law enforcement officers, telecommunications, training personnel, victim advocates, and others. It can impact equipment needs, safety reviews, sound human resource processes, training, and many other areas that make for healthier, safer, and more productive public safety work environments.
Hello, I'm Charlie Dean, Chief of Police, Prince William County Police Department in northern Virginia. The police department has been KLEA accredited since 1987, and our Training Academy and Public Safety Communications have also been accredited in recent years. I've always been a strong advocate of KLEA for a number of reasons that I'd like to discuss more fully. But in a nutshell, KLEA provides a chief or sheriff a framework of well-established practices in law enforcement, and a system of accountability that is periodically tested through audits by outside professionals.
Some of the benefits of accreditation are: proven management system, greater accountability within the agency. KLEA standards give the chief executive officer a proven management system of written directives, sound training, clearly defined lines of authority, and routine reports that support decision-making and resource allocation. Once implemented and institutionalized by the agency, the system is reliable. The CEO will have confidence in the agency's ability and employees to understand their duties and trust the outcomes. A reduced officer risk and liability exposure. Activities involving public safety personnel are the source of a significant percentage of lawsuits. This can be particularly worrisome for public safety agencies that are operating under outdated or non-existent policies and procedures. The adoption of performance standards, which serve to reduce risk exposures associated with these activities, is strongly encouraged. That is why KLEA's internationally recognized accreditation programs are extremely desirable to city and state attorneys or government risk managers. One of the best defenses against lawsuits brought against a public safety agency is that the agency was acting properly in accordance with established written policies that meet KLEA standards, and that the agency was reviewed by an independent, outside team of KLEA-trained assessors, and has been accredited by KLEA. One of the documented benefits of accreditation is the financial incentive offered by many insurance providers to KLEA-accredited agencies. Liability insurance providers have determined that KLEA-accredited agencies cost them less money, so they offer financial incentives in order to encourage agencies to become KLEA-accredited. Accredited agencies are better able to defend themselves against civil lawsuits. Also, many agencies report a decline in legal actions against them once they become accredited. Liability and risk exposure articles written by KLEA agencies can be found on the KLEA website at www.klea.org. Staunch support from government officials.
Hello, I'm Bruce Beckman, a city council member-at-large in Littleton, Colorado. Before being elected to council, I served the community as a division commander in the Littleton Police Department. I have been part of the accreditation process, and I've watched how it has benefited our department and the community. I believe it is important, as an elected official, that citizens have confidence and pride in our police department. I often hear how proud they are to have an accredited police agency serving them. Our department is recognized for excellence.
Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials are more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. A city manager commented at an accreditation hearing, accreditation has strengthened the relationship with the city and the agency. It has also given city officials an accountability that didn't exist before the agency embraced the process. Increased community advocacy. Accreditation embodies the precepts of community-oriented policing. It creates a forum in which law enforcement agencies and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement, and provides clear direction about community expectations. An active community and agency relationship has proven to reduce crime rates, increase awareness, and accountability. A comprehensive, uniform set of written directives. Accreditation requires an agency to institutionalize its directives, policies, and procedures. This is one of the most successful methods for reaching administrative and operational goals while also providing direction to personnel. KLEA accreditation standards provide the necessary reports and analyses a CEO needs to make fact-based, informed management decisions. A prepared program is put in place, so an agency is ready to address natural or man-made unusual occurrences.
If you didn't have a system of regular review, you could find yourself out of balance as it relates to policy and practice. So, from just a policy point of view, I think it's a very valuable program to have.
KLEA standards enable public safety administrators to strengthen existing procedures while simultaneously creating a solid foundation for the agency's future. The accreditation model must be embraced by the CEO for it to be successful. KLEA clients have stated that accreditation has brought their agency into the contemporary public safety arena. They have suggested that before accreditation, they did not have strategic training, operable equipment, sound administrative processes, or access to employee resources. KLEA accreditation assists in an agency's pursuit of professional excellence.
Thank you, Dave. Tom, the Administrative Committee heard this on May the 12th.
Yes, we did, and we had a series of questions, and I feel like we felt our questions were well answered, and we chose to move it forward to the full council for consideration.
Comments from other councillors?
I kind of like the program, just from the point of view, providing structure to the department to allow for better management, which means better efficiency, and reflecting the precepts of community policing, which we have here, really could reinforce the ability of the department to interface well with the community. And then with the periodic oversight, nothing against the current oversight within the department, but having somebody else check you out from time to time is not a bad thing, just to make sure that you're not missing something along the way. And so, I think that this would be a good program, and I think it could really enhance the efficiency and the ability of the department to do its job.
Walter?
Mayor, I appreciate Chief Duke pursuing this, bringing it forward. I understand he's been looking at this for a year or more, that there were some fees involved, that they were not able to convince the powers that be, ourselves, regarding budget issues, to cover that. And they went out and managed to get a $10,000 fee waiver.
$10,100 waiver, the initial application.
Yeah, $10,100 waiver. I particularly like the fact that it has performance standards, it has procedures, and the biggest selling point to me is the reduced officer risk. So, I'm in favor of us pursuing this.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief, we got the, I guess, first four years of what this will run, so after the, it's a three-year process as far as renewal, so is this basically repeat these costs? I'm looking at the back page of the packet here. Does it basically repeat these costs every three years, or how's that work?
After the assessment that we do, and then we are audited, if we do get accreditation, then we have a three-year period. A membership fee upon that accreditation is a little over $4,000. I think it's $4,065 annual membership. That is directed toward paying for the next audit for travel and expenses, along with membership and some software charges to subscribe.
And does that include, then, the $1,150? That's a separate fee that will, will that be annually as well?
Yes, the $1,150 is separate, since it's through a different software. We currently use what they call the light version, which is included in the membership fee, but I'm requesting we go to the next step up, so we can go paperless.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
John? I agree with everything that's been said. So, I would make a motion that we accept the fee waiver and authorize Chief Duke to sign the CALEA accreditation and access process to get us going down that road.
Second. Motion by John, a second by Tom, to approve this process of the CALEA accreditation, and give Chief Duke the authorization to sign it. I will start with the roll from you, John.
Aye.
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 Thank you, David. Consider it done. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, folks, moving on, we got a public hearing before us on a proposed amendment titled four, chapter six, of Moscow City Code regarding the allowance of tandem parking. And Bill Belknap will do the presentation, please. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. Before you, there's a proposed legislative code amendment to the city zoning code regarding tandem parking within the city of Moscow. Just to provide a little bit of background, the zoning code establishes a variety of standards for off-street parking, including the number of spaces that are required, the dimensions of those spaces, how they have to be marked, the dimensions of the travelways, as well as required landscaping and surfacing for the development of new off-street parking areas. One area that the parking standards are silent on is the configuration of tandem parking, and that's where you would have two stalls essentially in line with each other. It is, the code does not address tandem parking, but it has been historically permitted and allowed by the city for quite some period of time for single and two-family uses, but it has not been allowed previously for multifamily residential or commercial uses. Our office recently received a request to consider the allowance of tandem parking for multifamily development, so just moving it up into a little bit higher intensity residential land use, and that prompted a review by staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission of how other surrounding jurisdictions address tandem parking, and provided that information to the commission. Ultimately, the commission studied the issue along with staff, and ultimately recommended an amendment to recognize tandem parking formally, as we have in the past, for single and two-family uses, twin home and townhouses, which we also consider to be single-family dwellings, and multifamily uses in limited situations and under limited conditions. As you see, we had a table, actually, that was included in your packet this evening, that researched how other communities had addressed tandem parking, and many of them were very similar to how we have historically managed it, and were as generally permitted in single-family, two-family, townhouse, and other similar types of projects. But very few of them actually recognized or allowed it in multifamily. There were a couple, and after talking to some staff in other jurisdictions where the code doesn't currently explicitly allow it, they indicated that they were allowing it on certain projects and looking at amending the code to allow it in limited situations. So, the amendments, or the proposal, the draft is before you this evening, as I mentioned, would formally recognize tandem parking for single-family, two-family, twin home, and townhouse uses. I would also allow the recognition of tandem parking for multifamily uses under the following conditions. The first of which is that the purpose of the parking design is to provide enclosed garages for the multifamily dwelling residence use. That really was the driver on the approach to us to recognize the parking was, they wanted to provide this amenity to the project, and they wanted to be able to place a parking stall essentially behind a garage door. So, they would like to have the space in the garage bay be considered towards providing the off-street parking requirement, and have a parking space in front of that garage door. There are concerns, when you look at multifamily projects and tandem parking, is that it does require a certain level of coordination among those within dwelling, a single dwelling unit, as well as those in other dwellings. And if you think about the off-street parking requirement for multifamily use, we have a variety of standards, whether it's a single-bedroom apartment, it's 1.25 parking spaces per unit. If it's a two-bedroom park, it's 1.75, and if it's three or more, it's 0.75 stalls per bedroom. But all of that parking is combined into a centralized parking facility that essentially everybody then can utilize. And so, you may have instances where one dwelling unit has fewer vehicles than another, and allows that to balance out, or there's usually excess parking spaces available for guests and visitors that are coming to the site that maybe don't reside on-site. When you get into a tandem configuration, you are dependent upon the coordination of vehicles to have access to those parking spaces, so there were concerns that we would be reducing the effective amount of parking that would be available. The other condition that's in the draft ordinance is that the tandem parking space, that being the parking space within the garage and the parking space in front of the garage bay, are required to be assigned and furnished for use by the occupants of a single dwelling unit without separate additional compensation. That separate additional compensation is something that we've had some experience recently, where part of the required parking was provided in enclosed garages, but it was being offered for additional rent. In that type of situation, if the occupants or the residents on the project aren't interested in paying that additional rent, it is essentially taking that parking stall that's required by zoning code out of the available parking to meet their legal obligations underneath the zoning code. It's certainly fine to provide it, and the rent can certainly reflect the benefit of having that garage space, but we don't want to have it as a separate compensation, otherwise that parking can be removed from the inventory. The last was a concern, the last condition, was that the garage space shall only be counted as one quarter of a parking space towards satisfying the number of required off-street parking spaces for the multifamily use. There were concerns from the commission that garages become great places to store bikes and stuff, and you're not, you don't have that phenomenon when you have a parking lot, or at least not very often. And so, you can have personal household goods that would end up, you know, filling some of these garage units, and effectively taking some of the parking that is required in the zoning code away because it's being utilized in that fashion. There is also a concern that it does require coordination, and that if you had a three-bedroom unit, and it required 2.25 parking spaces for that unit, and there are the two spaces there in tandem, if they had a guest or visitor coming, where would they park? You know, their only option may be to park behind somebody else's garage door. So, the intent of only counting that second garage bay towards the required parking, it can always be provided, but if they want us to count it towards the required off-street parking for the project, is we'd only count it as a fractional requirement. So that if some are used for storage of personal goods, or we lose some efficiency due to the coordination of vehicles, we still have other surface parking there that can help meet that demand. They're getting some benefit, because we're, every four stalls essentially is knocking off a stall they have to put out in the exterior surface parking, but we're also making sure that we aren't counting it 100 percent, where we might find that 75 percent of them are being used for storage, and now we have, you know, half of the parking that the code would require. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing upon the proposed amendment on April 28th, at which time they unanimously recommended approval of the amendment to the city council. And I will also note that we had a letter that we neglected to get into the packet that was submitted for the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearing for Victoria Seaver in support of the proposed amendment. in support of the proposed amendment. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Bill, in our packet, I noticed that you gave nine examples of nine different cities, four of them in the state of Idaho, and the rest in Montana, as well as Washington. And they were kind of all over the board. Some did not permit it, others allowed it, and then others allowed it if you had valet parking or attendant present, and some of them weren't even mentioned in the code. Kind of interesting. So it's kind of all over, about every kind of a variety that you can.
It is.
So I appreciate the fact that you gave the council and us a number of different things in our area. Dan, you got a question?
Yeah, Bill, going back to the way our code works, I'm figuring that this is coming to us because it's not explicit in our code at the moment. So, this is a way to, since it's not explicit, our code says it's not allowed, so this is a way to, if nothing else, codify it in a way that is allowed in some instances.
For the single-family and two-family, I think that's the case. That's been historically allowed. It is somewhat recognized in the code when it discusses the parking configuration, but not explicitly. So we did want to address that. In the multifamily, you know, that is, that would be a different configuration. We generally have not recognized in that past, and this would, so this is a new allowance that we have not allowed in previous developments.
So it was explicitly disallowed before?
It was not.
Or just not?
It was just not recognized. When you get, when you got into a parking lot, so as soon as you get into a multifamily, most often you're into parking lot design standards. A parking lot has a bunch of diagrams about how the stalls can be configured, their dimensions and the travel aisles, and there is no diagram that refers to a tandem parking configuration. So, it was one that had not been recognized and not addressed in the code. This would specifically allow it.
So the only real example that I have experience with is like parking behind a fire station downtown, is that that would be considered tandem parking?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Walter, each slide. Thank you, Mayor. So, Bill, I'm looking at the proposed ordinance change, and item E codifies the single-family, two-family, twin home, and townhouse dwellings.
Correct.
Which you say is not specifically called out in our current ordinance. And then, it talks about the multifamily with the three conditions that you've already put up on the screen.
That's correct.
Okay. If I may, a couple of, just clarifications. The multifamily would only be applicable where there are garages.
Correct.
And would it solve your separate sale of garage space problem that you've had come up recently?
Correct.
So it would, where we don't have it now, they would not be grandfathered in?
Correct. This does not specifically address the required parking being provided in the garage. That, we have just concluded, is disallowed underneath the code. These were specifically just for the tandem parking configuration, and so, we just wanted to make sure that where we were discussing multifamily, because we don't quite honestly get into garages provided in multifamily settings very often. Where we found it to be provided under the separate compensation, we've addressed that just through the code provisions of their obligations and other elements of the code that address the required off-street parking provision. But where we were going to get into multifamily and specifically talk about garages, we wanted to make sure that that was clear in this location. So we didn't feel there were any other changes necessary within the code to address an issue that we have experienced recently. But in this case, where we're specifically talking about, this is only, you know, to allow garages, you know, tandem parking would only be recognized to allow the garages. We wanted to make sure that we were explicitly clear, both that the garage and the space behind it be assigned to the same unit, so that unit can do coordination for jockeying of vehicles if necessary, but also that they're furnished, had no additional compensation.
And one final question. And the proposed ordinance change does not create any confusion or conflict with the other parts of the code that talk about how many spaces are required per bedroom?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments before I open it up to public hearing?
I just have one question. Within our proposed code, do we, are we allowing tandem to be more than two, or are we only allowing two in series?
Only two.
Only two. So we can't have, we can't count a tandem of three?
That was not contemplated, no.
Okay. I wasn't clear in reading it, and I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Any of those in favor, please step to the podium and address your, give us your name and your address. And I see no one rushing to the podium, so anybody with general comments who would disagree with this, please step forward. Going once, going twice. I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to approve the ordinance on the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, Walter made a motion to approve. Now, Laura, you got that, with under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings. And Tom Lamar, seconded it. Start with the roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, that passed six to nothing. Thank you very much. We will move on to our second public hearing, folks. Boy, hang on a second, I gotta read the order, and that's sorry. Laura, this is ordinance number 2014-5. Okay, folks, it's kind of my personality, I just move right along. I'm like the energized buddy here. Here we go. Ordinance number 2014-05, an ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation in the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter VI, providing for the amendment of the design requirements for parking lots, including the allowance of tandem parking, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Thank you. We will move on to item number seven, folks, which is a public hearing of the proposed amendment, Title IV, Chapter III of the Moscow City Code to regarding the allowance of mortuaries to be within the general business, motor business, and neighborhood business districts. Bill Belknap will...
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And council. As you introduce, this is a proposed legislative amendment to the zoning code regarding mortuaries and funeral homes within the general business, motor business, and the neighborhood business zoning district. And to provide a little background on this topic, earlier this year in January, our office received an inquiry from Short's Funeral Chapel, it's located on Sixth Street, regarding a potential accessory structure that they would wish to possibly construct on their property. After looking at the zoning code, it was identified that a mortuary or funeral parlor was not a permissible use in the neighborhood business district. We did a little, in February, received a letter from the owner of the Short's Funeral Chapel property stating or requesting the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a look at that situation and consider amending the neighborhood business district to allow mortuaries and funeral parers for funeral homes in the neighborhood business district. Currently, mortuaries are only a named, permitted, conditionally permitted use within the central business and the general business district, and that's the only place that they appear within the code. We did research the zoning that was in place at the time that Short's was established in that location in 1981. It appears that a special use permit was issued or approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 1981, but we could not find a clear authority under which that was issued. There were no specifically named special uses in the neighborhood business district at that time, and that property was under that designation, but we did find record and meeting minutes of a special use permit that was issued for the establishment of Short's that I believe prior to that was in the downtown core in the central business district. After review, the commission directed staff to prepare an amendment for their consideration, and that's what we're here to look at this evening. The neighborhood business district currently allows a variety of uses by right, the first of which are establishments that provide clerical, professional, and other skilled services which do not involve substantial fabrication. Examples of such uses include, but not limited to, the offices of professionals such as doctors, lawyers, accountants, counselors, architects, and engineers, consultant offices, administrators' offices, beauty and barber shops, and graphic and photographic studios. The zoning district also allows churches, convents, monasteries, synagogues, and mox as allowed uses within the neighborhood business district. After review, the commission felt that mortuaries and funeral homes would appear to fit within the category of both skilled services, from the services that are furnished and provided, as well as similar to church, churches with respect to the structures, parking areas, funerals, and services, and other types of activities that occur with those uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission also took a look, and so the commission concluded they believed that mortuary should be considered as a permitted use within the motor business, general business, and neighborhood business zoning district. As I mentioned, the inquiry was initially about the neighborhood business district, but the commission wanted to look at the other commercial districts in the zoning code to determine where they would also be appropriately located. They concluded that in the motor business district would be appropriate. They also felt that the general business should be a permitted use by right rather than a conditional use permit as it is today, and they felt that they should be permitted use by right within the neighborhood business zoning district. The commission conducted a public hearing upon the proposed amendment on April 28th and recommend approval of the amendment to the city council that would list the mortuaries as a permitted use in the motor business, general business, neighborhood business district, and that's before you were hearing this evening. With that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
It's kind of interesting, Bill, how things slip through the cracks. They've been there for 33 years. I remember when they built that, and I thought, oh, what a marvelous building, you know, for a mortuary and a chapel, and it's just amazing how things slip through the cracks. And this is kind of a typical example, folks, of how things happen sometimes, and here it is 33 years later. Wayne?
Well, Bill, not only are they not being a permitted use, are they not able to build an accessory structure?
Correct.
It would seem to me also that if they have a catastrophic fire of 70 percent or greater, that they wouldn't even be able to rebuild by right.
Possibly. We would have to research that. The city did knowingly issue a special use permit for the use, as was proposed and as was developed, and so, there is a possibility that they could reestablish that use if we could demonstrate that there was a legal authority to issue the special use permit, and that's the one thing that is just a little bit unclear at this point in time. It does not allow us the opportunity to expand the use, and so the new accessory structure or any other type of expansion or enlargement of the use would not be permissible.
Yeah.
Bill, prior to their moving on to Sixth Street, they were in the central business district, correct?
Correct.
No, but we're not, we aren't going to be allowing that in any way, or are they current, or is a mortuary currently allowed in the central business?
Is a conditionally permitted use in the central business district, and is proposed to remain in that category.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Bill before opening up the public hearing? Thank you, Bill. I will open the public hearing for this. Anybody in favor, let's step to the podium and speak. You're welcome to at this time. General comments or those that would be opposed, please step to the podium. Saying none, I will close this. Thirty seconds after I opened it, and we will move on. John?
This apparently, and I think for good reason, is more of a housekeeping issue than it is anything else, and all we're doing is actually just putting something in that was omitted 37 years ago. I doubt if it was meant to be omitted at that time, but it was, and this just kind of clears the whole thing up and makes it easier for the people that are doing business there, makes it easier for the staff, so I'm in favor of.
Okay, Walter?
A question for Bill, if I may. Bill, the original request was from the funeral home was to allow mortuaries in the neighborhood business by a permitted use, correct?
That is correct.
But we're going further than that, in that we're allowing them by permitted use and changing the ordinance in both the general business and motor business as well.
That's correct.
But leaving it, as was asked a moment ago, as a conditional use in central business.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, if I may, to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Tom made the motion to approve this ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that be read by title and published by summary, and Dan seconded the motion. I will start the roll with Art.
Aye.
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 And that passed six to nothing, so that ordinance I will read, and this is 06. Ordinance number 2014-06, an ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter III, providing for the allowance of mortuaries within the motor business district, neighborhood business zoning districts, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. So that, we will continue to move on with reports, and I'll start with the admin.
Well, we, most of, I guess, everything that we covered at admin came here, so we've dispatched with all of those items as well, so.
Okay.
And then, let's see, other things that I attended, I've been to a couple of different committee meetings recently, Parks and Rec, which of course had other items that we had during the consent agenda. This week, I attend the Clearwater RC&amp;D meeting on Thursday down in Lewiston. Earlier this evening, Art and I went over to the Gritman Medical Center and took place in the 3D mammography.
Imaging.
Open house, and there was an interesting presentation on that new piece of equipment over at Gritman. It sounds like we've got this new piece of technology here at the Gritman Medical Center, which is very advanced for detecting early breast cancer cases. The closest other 3D imaging facilities are either in the Tri-Cities or in McCall. And so, if people are in the need for getting good quality imaging, it's recommended for breast cancer detection, it's recommended that they try to get a 3D image rather than a 2D image, and it's, they say it's worth the drive. You get a much better chance of detection with this kind of technology than with the 2D, the traditional 2D technology. So, that means people in Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, Lewiston, Grangeville, you're better off driving to Moscow and getting that imaging than staying at home and getting the 2D technology because you've got a better chance of getting early detection. So that was a real eye-opener, I think, for both Art and I when we were over there earlier. So, that's it for my reports. Thanks.
Walter? Thank you, Mayor. Everything that was considered last Monday at the Public Works Finance Committee has been addressed tonight, so that's taken care of. On May the 15th, I attended as liaison to the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee. Several items that were covered had to do with investigative work that's being done research-wise regarding the sub-basin recharge, some fracture zones that have become identified up around Palouse that are interesting, and what impact they may have on how the basin works, as well as proposals from the entities regarding updating the groundwater management plan. I would merely take the council's, this opportunity to bait the council and tell them, I think they will hear more about that in the near future with a little bit of detail, and I won't go into it tonight. That's all I've got.
Wayne?
I have no reports, having been gone for a while. I could certainly report on my activities, but that's probably vacations aren't in order here, so, thank you very much, Walter, for covering for me at admin. I appreciate that.
Good. Thank you, Wayne. We'll move down to Art.
Yeah, we had the traditional first Wednesday breakfast with the county commission and University of Idaho leadership, and folks in Moscow should be braced for a fair amount of construction over on campus. Deacon Street will be closed. It'll be the start of the new research building next to the forestry building. Lights going in up along Perimeter Drive, so there's going to be quite a lot going on there. Beware. And Sustainable Environment Commission meeting is tomorrow, and the week after that is the Paradise Path Task Force, so not having happened yet, I don't know what to report on those. So not having happened yet, I don't know what to report on those.
That would make sense. Okay, thank you, Art. Dan?
Well, on the sixth, the tree commission met, and they managed to do so without me. But they did, they did review the nice Arbor Day function that we attended with Lena Whitmore, planting a tree over there by the, where the old swimming pool used to be. And then on the eighth, the transportation commission met again without me. But the pedestrian zone public outreach is moving forward with the downtown shelves that everybody's starting to see on Main Street now. And hopefully, we'll see our walk your wheels signage down there on the, on the sidewalks. So it's a little bit better for pedestrians down there. On the 13th, 1912 Committee, we met because they're getting ready to put out to bid the east and south ends of the building. The east end will probably for sure get done, but they're going to get a number for the south face, which is what faces Third Street.
To do what?
To put, fix the windows and get everything, bricks all pointed and...
Tucked.
Get it pointed and tucked, and all the good stuff that needs done. So they're also going to have, and I didn't get the dates on it, but pretty soon they'll have tours of the upstairs for folks that are interested. And hopefully, I'll be able to report on that next time.
Swimming pool, Lena Whitmore?
Where the, not Lena, I meant West Park.
Oh, West Park, okay.
Can I say Lena?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, West Park.
Thanks, thanks.
Then on the 13th, Arts Commission met. There was a lot of talk about the planning for the 30-30-30 sale that they have up here at City Hall that seemed pretty popular last time it happened. And they're...
Dan, Tom Palmer buys it all.
Getting all jacked up for Art Walk on June 13th. And that's all I got.
Tom?
I've got a couple here. Urban Renewal met on the 14th, and the Police Knowledge Corps with the Be Entrepreneur program, they were pushing that. And that starts on Wednesday, June 21st through the 25th. And then we had a real nice presentation on economic indicators, national, regional, and local by Jeff Jones, and explained just exactly how these numbers are arrived at, and how they're used. And then the committee allowed or authorized the chairman to execute a voluntary remediation agreement with the Idaho Department, IDEQ, Environmental Quality. And we're trying to take care of that section down Sixth and Jackson. And then the worst bit of news was that Jeff told us that as of the end of the month, he will no longer be with us. He has taken a job in Park City, Utah, and he will be missed. He's done a good job for the city. He will be hard to replace. Then we had the Planning and Zoning Commission on Wednesday evening. Only a couple of things there. There was a public hearing proposal for the rezone and preliminary subdivision plat for property generally located directly north of Highway 8 and east of Ridgeview. And it went from being all R1 to R2, R1 and R3. And that did pass. And then probably something that has been kind of a thorn in our side for a while is a review of the proposed parkland amendment for Indian Hills Sixth Edition to the city of Moscow. And that has got way too many players in it to list them now, but it was accepted and passed as written. And so that will come to the city council. And the other thing I've got, instead of calling it the Human Resources Committee, I'll call it by its correct name, the Humans Right, Human Rights Committee. And that meets tomorrow afternoon at 4:30. So if you're not doing anything, come join us. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, John. I had a couple of reports in my cell. May the 5th, we had an airport board meeting and the continuation talks of the realignment and where we're headed with that. And it's kind of in that mode where we're waiting for things to come in front of us. Hopefully, I've got another meeting coming up next week with that, so I'll have more to report at the next council meeting. And as Art indicated, we, on May the 7th, we met with the University of Idaho folks and the county commissioners, as well as other city folks, about general discussions, what was going on in the county, city, as well as the U of I. And that's all I have. Gary, do you have a report you want to make?
Well, just want to report on public service recognition week activities. Of course, the mayor wrote a proclamation. Last city council meeting, we had our CHAPS awards, which are awards to city employees as voted on by their peers, exceptional customer service internal and external, Rookie of the Year. And I'll be darned if I can remember what the fourth one was, but they were on our website, and we issued a press release. We also had a great employee barbecue at the end of that week. It was a lot of fun, attended by a lot of council members and the mayor. That was very appreciative. The employees really enjoyed it. I also want to report, if I can, on the farmer's market commission, which, Tom, I think you're the liaison to that?
I was last year, but now it's Wayne.
I'm sorry, Wayne was out of town.
Yep, I was out of town.
But they had some requests come in front of them. They've got some interesting things coming up. They discussed the ability to have beer and wine sales in the market, and how there could be demonstrations of perhaps vintners or brewers who could help educate the public on anyone who wanted to do that. So we're working through that a little bit. Request from a restaurant to, again, reclaim some part of Friendship Square for an outdoor dining area, Bloom Restaurant. Also talked about the interaction of the brick and mortar businesses downtown with the farmer's market in ways that the profile of those main street businesses can still be maintained and encouraged during farmer's market. That draws about 5,000 people a week to the downtown. So it's a great business opportunity as well as a festival. Some other things they wanted to talk about as well was the branding of the market. They've had some requests for sponsorships, some local businesses who wanted to sponsor the market. So they're going through that as well, as well as certification of locally grown goods, so that the nature of the farmer's market, being a local farmer's market, can be maintained. So that's just kind of what's going on. If you have an interest, it's a very active group, and you can go down there every weekend during the summer and see what they do. So thank you.
And on the farmer's market item, Gary, a note. Very soon, we'll probably have more than 5,000 people on a Saturday, because we're erecting three over the street banners downtown directing people to Main Street for those passing through town on 95 or Highway 8 and don't know there's a farmer's market down there. It'll say Farmer's Market, eight to one, every Saturday, May to October, or some such.
Those banners should be up within the next two weeks, we hope.
So that'll be that. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn to executive session, per Idaho Code 67-2345-1C.
Are we going to reconvene? No, we will not reconvene.
One second.
We'll start with a roll from John.
Aye.
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 We are closed, folks, for executive session. Thank you for coming. Have a nice evening.